One eleven P M and a quorum is present in the meeting has been duly filed and posted in the time and matter required by law. To start with, do we have any members of the public who are allowed to address the board regarding the post of Board of General Adam? Right, hearing done, our first rule of business is an executive closed session. An executive closed session will be held under provisions of Texas Government Code, chapter five, item one. It is one eleven P M and we are joined in a closed session. We'll back shortly.
It is one eighteen P M and we are reconvened from executive closed session. The next item on the agenda is the grievance hearing of Shonda King. Dr. Rollo, has there been a request for the hearing to be in open session?
Yes, there has.
The board will remain in open session to hear the level three complaint of Mrs. King. Mrs. King has filed...
I'm sorry, okay.
Oh, Mrs. King, would you come up, please? I'm sorry. And this, it will be just a moment, Shonda, so if you want to sit, it's going to be...
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Hey, Mrs. King has filed multiple grievances concerning her employment with the district pursuant to board policy DGBA local. Per Mrs. King's request, all pending grievances are being consolidated into one complaint and will be heard at level three at this time. In accordance with the grievance policy DGBA local, I have received and distributed to the board copies of Mrs. King's written complaints and the administration's written responses to the pending grievances. The following is a history of the grievances Mrs. King has filed and the status of those pending complaints. Level one complaint was filed on April third, April fourth, and April fifth alleging FMLA institutional discrimination, Title VII Code of Ethics Penal Code, tort of negligence, and ADEA violations. This complaint was heard by Max Flores on April sixteenth, twenty twenty four, and the level one response was provided to Mrs. King on April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Mrs. King then filed an appeal to level two on May fourteenth, twenty twenty four. The level two appeal was heard by Rick Rodriguez on May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, and a response at level two was provided on June thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Level, a level one complaint alleging whistleblower violations was filed on April twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. The level one hearing was held on May fifteenth, twenty twenty four, and the level one response was provided by Max Flores on May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. A level one complaint alleging discrimination, failure to compensate, FMLA retaliation, and harassment was filed on May twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. The level one hearing was held on June eleventh, twenty twenty four by Max Flores, and the level one response was provided on June twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. A level one complaint was filed on June twenty seventh, twenty twenty four complaining that a hundred and sixty-seven day, ten-month contract was attempted to be issued. A response at level one was provided by Max Flores on July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. As stated above, all pending complaints have been consolidated and will be considered at this hearing. According to board policy DGBA local, the timely level three hearing was scheduled. Board members are being provided copies of the appeal forms and responses as well as other documents that constitute the record in this grievance. Also, for the record, there is a quorum of the board present at this proceeding, and I am Beth Bridges, President of the Board of Trustees for Lubbock ISD. To establish on the record that the board can render a fair decision, I ask that any member of this hearing body who cannot be fair and unbiased in deciding this matter to excuse himself or herself, is there anyone who feels that they should be excused? Let the record reflect that no one has indicated that they cannot be impartial in this matter. In order to provide the most accurate record possible, a tape recording and video of this proceeding is being made. Please avoid talking when others are speaking so that the tape will reflect the proceedings accurately. Also, please identify yourself when you speak so that the record will be clear. Will Mrs. King or her representative, please state your name?
Good afternoon, my name is Shonda King.
Thank you. Will the representative for the Lubbock Independent School District Administration, please state your name?
Slater Elza here on behalf of the administration.
Thank you both. We have convened today to consider the grievance of Mrs. Shonda King. This is a level three hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to give Mrs. King the opportunity to fully present any testimony or evidence that she may have in support of her grievances as stated in her complaints, and to allow the district representative to present pertinent testimony and/or evidence. The hearing procedure we use is simple. Mrs. King will go first and present her complaints. Mr. Elza, the district representative, will then have an opportunity to respond. Mrs. King, you or your representative may make your presentation by presenting any relevant testimony or evidence in support of your allegations. At the conclusion of that presentation, Mr. Elza may make his own presentation as he deems necessary. I will allow each party a maximum of thirty minutes to make their presentation. If either party has remaining time, a maximum of five minutes may be reserved for closing comments. Please note that this is not a trial-type evidentiary hearing. It is instead a hearing according to board policy, and it will be conducted accordingly. Thus, Mrs. King, in accordance with DGBA local, you are precluded from bringing up any issue not already reflected in the record. This is not a court proceeding, and there will be no cross-examination. Are there any questions for me related to these procedures?
Not really, administration.
Thank you. Hearing none, let's proceed. Mrs. King, you now have a maximum of thirty minutes, and you may now begin your presentation, and let the record reflect that the time is now one twenty-four P M. Do you wish to reserve time to make closing comments?
Yes, I did, five minutes.
All right, so you'll have twenty-five minutes. Oh, yes, you can come to the podium if you like, or you may stay there. Okay. Okay. Mrs. King, you may proceed. We have the timer ready for you. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Shonda King, and I'm a formal employee of Lubbock ISD. Here are some cru, here are some crucial facts you must remember. All of my teaching and administrative evaluations are mainly accomplished with distinguished, with distinguished and proficient. My work ethic, my professional demeanor, and timeliness were all esteemed. My principals recommended renewal of my contract every year, including twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. I was aggressively recruited through email, phone calls, and face-to-face visits by Lubbock ISD Executive Principals Damon McCall and Amy Stevenson, stating Talkington needed a minority principal, and you are the perfect person for that position. I applied for the position out of a directive from Damon McCall. He called on the morning of my administrative PLC, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. He said, "My boss, Dr. Kathy Rollo, told me to tell you, you needed to apply to that position, and whatever my boss tells me to do, Shonda, I do it." Shonda applied for the principal position at Talkington. I ended the call within minutes, and the application was submitted. I was empowered to interview for the position by Superintendent Dr. Kathy Rollo. My application required my degrees, my experience, and the types of certifications I held, and I listed each one of them. Elementary E C through six, masters in leadership, bachelor's as a teacher. I did not write a letter of interest for the position. Within Frontline and S B E C portal, the only certifications that are listed are my teaching certifications. Texas Education Code of Ethics, standard two point five, the educator shall not discriminate against or coerce a colleague on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, age, gender, disability, family status, or sexual orientation. Lubbock ISD Resource Department collected and qualified applicants for the interviews, not me. Lubbock ISD interview panelists chose me as the most qualified applicant, not me. They had the stacks of papers. Superintendent Dr. Kathy Rollo did not interview the top two applicants for the final determination of the successor for the Talkington position. She did not do her due diligence on purpose. My application did not deceive Lubbock ISD. The S B E C portal did not deceive Lubbock ISD. Frontline did not deceive Lubbock ISD. The questions you must ponder on today are, number one, how did H R Human Resource Department holding all of my credentials not check the S B E C portal or frontline? Because all of my credentials have always been there. Number two, the interview panelists, how did they overlook checking degrees and certifications? When I interviewed my applicants, all of that was a part of their profile. Number three, why did Dr. Kathy Rollo decide to forego her only responsibility in securing the most qualified person for the single-gender, blue-ribbon Magnet School for Young Ladies? Number four, was this intentional sabotage of my career within Lubbock ISD? Number five, who were the other applicants, and what were their qualifications? June first, twenty twenty-four, Lubbock ISD Superintendent Dr. Rollo, Max Flores, the Executive Director of Human Resources, moved with purpose. They were not ignorant to section twenty-one point two zero six Notice of Contract Renewal or Nonrenewal. It reads, "Not later than the tenth day before the last day of instruction, in a school, the Board of Trustees shall notify in writing each teacher whose contract is about to expire..."
Hey. Mrs. King has filed multiple grievances concerning her employment with the district pursuant to Board Policy DGBA Local. Per Mrs. King's request, all pending grievances are being consolidated into one complaint and will be heard at Level 3 at this time. In accordance with the grievance policy DGBA Local, I have received and distributed to the board copies of Mrs. King's written complaints and the administration's written responses to the pending grievances. The following is a history of the grievances Mrs. King has filed and the status of those pending complaints. Level 1 complaint was filed on April 3rd, April 4th, and April 5th alleging FMLA institutional discrimination, Title 7 Code of Ethics Penal Code, tort of negligence, and ADEA violations. This complaint was heard by Max Flores on April 16th, 2024, and the Level 1 response was provided to Mrs. King on April 30th, 2024. Mrs. King then filed an appeal to Level 2 on May 14th, 2024. The Level 2 appeal was heard by Rick Rodriguez on May 28th, 2024, and a response at Level 2 was provided on June 13th, 2024. A Level 1 complaint alleging whistleblower violations was filed on April 25th, 2024. The Level 1 hearing was held on May 15th, 2024, and the Level 1 response was provided by Max Flores on May 28th, 2024. A Level 1 complaint alleging discrimination, failure to compensate, FMLA retaliation, and harassment was filed on May 24th, 2024. The Level 1 hearing was held on June 11th, 2024 by Max Flores, and the Level 1 response was provided on June 27th, 2024. A Level 1 complaint was filed on June 27th, 2024 complaining that 167-day, 10-month contract was attempted to be issued. A response at Level 1 was provided by Max Flores on July 25th, 2024. As stated above, all pending complaints have been consolidated and will be considered at this hearing. According to Board Policy DGBA Local, the timely Level 3 hearing was scheduled. Board members are being provided copies of the appeal forms and responses as well as other documents that constitute the record in this grievance. Also, for the record, there is a quorum of the board present at this proceeding, and I am Beth Bridges, President of the Board of Trustees for Lubbock ISD. To establish on the record that the board can render a fair decision, I ask that any member of this hearing body who cannot be fair and unbiased in deciding this matter to excuse himself or herself. Is there anyone who feels that they should be excused? Let the record reflect that no one has indicated that they cannot be impartial in this matter. In order to provide the most accurate record possible, a tape recording and video of this proceeding is being made. Please avoid talking when others are speaking so that the tape will reflect the proceedings accurately. Also, please identify yourself when you speak so that the record will be clear. Will Mrs. King or her representative please state your name?
Good afternoon. My name is Shonda King.
Thank you. Will the representative for the Lubbock Independent School District Administration please state your name?
Slater Elza here on behalf of the administration.
Thank you both. We have convened today to consider the grievance of Mrs. Shonda King. This is a Level 3 hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to give Mrs. King the opportunity to fully present any testimony or evidence that she may have in support of her grievances as stated in her complaints, and to allow the district representative to present pertinent testimony and/or evidence. The hearing procedure we use is simple. Mrs. King will go first and present her complaints. Mr. Elza, the district representative, will then have an opportunity to respond. Mrs. King, you or your representative may make your presentation by presenting any relevant testimony or evidence in support of your allegations. At the conclusion of that presentation, Mr. Elza may make his own presentation as he deems necessary. I will allow each party a maximum of 30 minutes to make their presentation. If either party has remaining time, a maximum of 5 minutes may be reserved for closing comments. Please note that this is not a trial-type evidentiary hearing. It is instead a hearing according to Board Policy, and it will be conducted accordingly. Thus, Mrs. King, in accordance with DGBA Local, you are precluded from bringing up any issue not already reflected in the record. This is not a court proceeding, and there will be no cross-examination. Are there any questions for me related to these procedures? Thank you. Hearing none, let's proceed. Mrs. King, you now have a maximum of 30 minutes, and you may now begin your presentation. And let the record reflect that the time is now 1:24 PM. Do you wish to reserve time to make closing comments?
Yes, I do. 5 minutes.
Alright. So you'll have 25 minutes. Oh yes, you can come to the podium if you like, or you may stay there. Okay. Okay. Mrs. King, you may proceed. We have the timer ready for you. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Shonda King, and I'm a formal employee of Lubbock ISD. Here are some crucial facts you must remember. All of my teaching and administrative evaluations are mainly accomplished with distinguished and proficient. My work ethic, my professional demeanor, and timeliness were all esteemed. My principals recommended renewal of my contract every year, including 2023, 2024. I was aggressively recruited through email, phone calls, and face-to-face visits by Lubbock ISD Executive Principals Damon McCall and Amy Stevenson, stating "Talking to needed a minority principal, and you are the perfect person for that position." I applied for the position out of a directive from Damon McCall. He called on the morning of my administrative PLC, April 19th, 2023. He said, "My boss, Dr. Kathy Rollo, told me to tell you you needed to apply to that position, and whatever my boss tells me to do, Shonda, I do it." Shonda, apply for the principal position at Talkington. I ended the call within minutes, and the application was submitted. I was empowered to interview for the position by Superintendent Dr. Kathy Rollo. My application required my degrees, my experience, and the types of certifications I held, and I listed each one of them. Elementary EC through 6, Masters in Leadership, Bachelor's as a teacher. I did not write a letter of interest for the position. Within Frontline and SBC Portal, the only certifications that are listed are my teaching certifications. Texas Education Code of Ethics, Standard 2.5. The educator shall not discriminate against or coerce a colleague on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, age, gender, disability, family status, or sexual orientation. Lubbock ISD Resource Department collected and qualified applicants for the interviews, not me. Lubbock ISD interview panelists chose me as the most qualified applicant, not me. They had the stacks of papers. Superintendent Dr. Kathy Rollo did not interview the top 2 applicants for the final determination of the successor for the Talkington position. She did not do her due diligence on purpose. My application did not deceive Lubbock ISD. The SBC Portal did not deceive Lubbock ISD. Frontline did not deceive Lubbock ISD. The questions you must ponder on today are: Number 1, how did HR, Human Resource Department, holding all of my credentials, not check the SBC Portal or Frontline? Because all of my credentials have always been there. Number 2, the interview panelists, how did they overlook checking degrees and certifications? When I interviewed my applicants, all of that was a part of their profile. Number 3, why did Dr. Kathy Rollo decide to forego her only responsibility in securing the most qualified person for the single-gender, blue-ribbon magnet school for young ladies? Number 4, was this intentional sabotage of my career within Lubbock ISD? Number 5, who were the other applicants, and what were their qualifications? June 1st, 2024, Lubbock ISD Superintendent Dr. Rollo, Max Flores, the Executive Director of Human Resources, moved with purpose. They were not ignorant to Section 21.206 Notice of Contract Renewal or Nonrenewal. It reads, "Not later than the 10th day before the last day of instruction, in a school, the Board of Trustees shall notify in writing each teacher whose contract is about to expire, whether the Board purposes to renew or not to renew the contract. The notice must be delivered personally, by hand, to the teacher on the campus at which the teacher is employed, except that if the teacher is not present on campus on the date that the hand delivery is attempted, the notice must be mailed or prepaid certified mail and delivered by express delivery service to the teacher's address of record with the district." Notice that the postmark on or before the 10th day before the last day of instruction is considered timely given under this subchapter. B reads, "The Board failure to give notice required by Subchapter A within the time specified constitutes an election to employ the teacher in the same professional capacity for the following school year." Lubbock ISD, they chose to harass me on that day and to retaliate against me in hopes of me resigning. The word "resign" was stated endlessly. This was harassing and an intimidating tactic. Because if they fired or voided my contract, they would have to fire and void Matt Chancy's contract, the white, uncertified Assistant Principal. Lubbock ISD stated, "Principals, Assistant Principals, Associate Principals, all administrators must hold a mid-management or principal certification." But for some reason, that was overlooked with Matt Chancy on June 1st. June 15th, Lubbock ISD Superintendent Dr. Rollo, the Board President-at-Large at the time, Zack Brady, and Max Flores deceived and coerced me into abandoning the position that they qualified me for or to be fired immediately. They knew the rules even though I didn't. That is deceitful. However, they silently gave Matt Chancy the nonrenewal Board Failure Notice requirement. He continued as an uncertified campus administrator from June 1st throughout the year. Discrimination is the unfair treatment of a person or a group based on a protected characteristic such as race, gender, age, or sexual orientation. Discrimination breaks local, it breaks state, and it breaks federal law. My complaint is not simply the last portion of the year, it is the entire year. For an entire year, I was discriminated against. For an entire year, I was harassed, I was retaliated again. For an entire year, they pushed an illegal act on me. Lubbock ISD, DIA Local, reads, "The policy addressed the stopping against discrimination, harassment, and retaliation with respect to compensation, conditions, or privileges of employment." As stated, the memo that came from Kathy Rollo said, "Failure to obtain certificate, contract void." The letter gave notice that the Board of Trustees would meet on June 15th to take action and declare my contract void. The letter gave me the option to resign over and over and over again. Resign, resign, resign. That's what Max Flores sang on that day. It also gave these directives. It said, "Avoid contact with students and employees of Lubbock ISD. Remain at home for school hours. Remove my personal belongings from Lubbock ISD. Return all keys, resources, and property of Lubbock ISD. Do not discuss this memo with students or faculty of Lubbock ISD. You are not permitted to enter the school district property for any purposes without authorization from the superintendent, the one that told me to apply to the position." Matt Chancy, a white male that's uncertified Assistant Principal at Priority Intervention Academy, was not suspended, nor was he exiled from Lubbock ISD. He continued all summer, all fall, and all spring as an Assistant Principal, conducting T-Test, evaluating with teachers as an administrator, handling discipline as an administrator, attending professional development as an administrator. Lubbock ISD initiated Texas Education Code 21.206B for Matt Chancy, but not me. On June 15th, Lubbock ISD Board Meeting was placed. I was forced to abandon the position that I was coerced and coached to apply for by Damon McCall, Amy Stevens, and Dr. Kathy Rollo, or be fired immediately. I resigned as the principal of Talkington School for Young Women Leaders to avoid termination. I filed a local grievance requesting 1 year to obtain my principal certification, 1 year without retaliation, 1 year without harassment, 1 year without the pressure of things. Because they were the ones that asked me to apply for the position. I didn't have the power nor the authority to put myself in that position at all. Lubbock ISD mailed me a memo, salary adjustment. Let me read it to you. I will read part of it. "Due to the change of assignment in 2023-2024 school year, an adjustment in pay is necessary starting September 1st." Now, this memo came August 30th. They're telling me September 1st, just a few days later, a couple of days later, "Your new assignment will be an interventionist at Bean Elementary. A 10-month contract will be assigned. The role will not have supervisory responsibility and will be categorized as exempt. This change will result in pay adjustment, and I have provided you the calculations below." Now, this is the Human Resource Department. These are the people that specialize in writing the contracts. They wrote, "New daily rate $327.81." They did not care about my mortgage, they didn't care about my car notes, they didn't care about my responsibilities. Because they could have given me that year to stay in that same capacity, but they chose not to. They gave me a 10-month calendar contract for 167 days. These are those that specialize in writing contracts. They knew what they were doing at the time of executing this document. These are examples of the retaliation for not resigning when they told me to on June 1st. They demoted me from the position. They harassed me to resign or to sign the contract. They excluded me from all the administrative contracts, but Matt Chancy, he was at every one of them. They removed me from the T-Test Teacher Evaluation as an administrator, but he evaluated teachers all year long. They transferred me to a less desirable location. My pay was cut by $21,500 with less than a 5-day notice. I did not resign because I knew the duties, a part of the contract, were duties as assigned. I filed grievances for the nonrenewal administrative pay, EEOC complaint filed. The reassignment violated Education Code of Ethics and Board Policy, legal compensation and benefits compensation. The contract had to read 187 days, but they chose to write 167 days. September 16th through December 20th, I was on FMLA. I was diagnosed with depression, anxiety, and insomnia. December 20th, Lubbock ISD William Smith directed me not to return to work on December 21st. I didn't receive a paycheck for December. I didn't receive a phone call in December. I didn't receive a pay stub in December. I called and called and sent emails, and I did not get a response of why couldn't I at least see my paycheck? What happened? No, no, no communication back. January 24th, I decided to call Priority Intervention Academy, Matt Chancy. The secretary answered the phone, and they said that Matt Chancy was the Assistant Principal of PIA. I have the recording. January 25th, Grievance Level 3, Randall Duke was my attorney. He argued that Lubbock ISD did not give notice of nonrenewal, 21.206A and B. The memo from August 30th constituted a unlawful change in my professional capacity and pay. Lubbock ISD denied every solution, all requests. Under Texas Education Code 21.206, it says I was entitled to be employed in a professional capacity of an administrator for 2023-2024 school year since I did not receive notice of a proposed nonrenewal during the previous school year. January 29th, example of discrimination. Matt Chancy was reassigned as an inclusion teacher, but where? At the exact same school. How in the world is that the exact same treatment? 5 months later, after I was placed at Bean Elementary, they changed his title but keep him right exactly where he was the whole time. February 6, 2024, I requested an open records request. This request asks for all Principals, Assistant Principals, Associate Principals since 2018 that were hired as administrators without their principal certification. Lubbock ISD redacted the entire document and emailed it to the Texas Attorney General. The Texas Attorney General said they have to release all requested documents. I have yet to receive that document. February 24th, I filed an employment discrimination suit against Lubbock ISD. Your policy says a district may not discriminate against an employee or applicant for employment because the employee or applicant has opposed an unlawful discriminatory employment practice or participated in an investigation of the complaint related to an unlawful or discriminating employment practice. The very next day, February 22nd, without notice of nonrenewal or proposed termination of administrative contract, Lubbock ISD attempted to terminate my administrative contract. I did not receive notice before or after. The process lacked the notice and was null. February 23rd, I filed an imperfect petition for review with TEA. I am still fighting for the rehearing. April 3rd through May 24th, I filed the following grievances: Discrimination, retaliation, Matt Chancy, whistleblower complaint. Matt Reber, Misty Reber's husband, was certified as a paraprofessional. Termination of administrative contract complaint, whistleblower. All grievances 1 and 2 remedies were denied. May 8th, this one is big, because I want you to listen to this. I received an email from Max Flores. He had no authorization to send this email because he is not a part of the Board of Trustees. The email from Max Flores said that the district had renewed all mutual agreed contracts. The Board could not renew my contract because the record showed that my contract for 2023-2024 is unsigned. Remember that. On the 8th, they said it was unsigned. And cannot be determined acceptance. He continued, "If I voluntarily chose not to sign the contract for 2023-2024, my assignment will terminate at the end of the year." In other words, sign the contract or resign. All nonrenewals and renewal contracts are authorized only by the Board of Trustees, not Mr. Flores. He got a lot of power, but he is not the Board of Trustees. Now, this is what you have to note. If you voluntarily choose not to sign the 23-24 contract offer, there is nothing you need to do. Your work assignment will terminate at the end of the school year. He is saying, "If you don't sign that contract," which was illegal, "you're going to be terminated." You have one or the other, or if you don't do any, we're going to just fire you. May 9th, I received a notice of termination of my administrative contract by email on the day of my daughter's wedding. How sweet, Dr. Rollo. So dependable. May 8th, Mr. Flores stated that the district did not have a signed contract for 23-24, but all of a sudden, now they can find it, and now the Board of Trustees have terminated it. And the rationale of why my employment status was changed to at-will a day later my contract did exist. May 13th, the 10th day before the last day of school, I received, hand-delivered by Lubbock ISD Police, the termination of my administrative term contract. Not from a board member, not from HR, but from the police. Texas Education Code 21.206. I was terminated from employment because I refused to engage in an illegal act. I don't care how they push numbers together. 167 without a furlough process constitutes an illegal act. May 8th, Mr. Flores gave me an ultimatum. Sign the Teacher 167 contract, resign, or you're fired. Because I did not sign the illegal contract, Lubbock ISD held my ESER installment pay of $1,500. I was supposed to get that. I had already worked for it. But they put a stipulation in there because when they sent this contract out, I was changed from general funds to ESER funds. That is another part of the retaliation. Now, I wonder, was Matt Chancy funded under ESER funds? June 26th, Mr. Flores replied to Grievance 1 on Page 5. The second paragraph, he said, "Your complaint regarding the 167-day contract was presented to you on September 2023. Therefore, this complaint is untimely." He did not say it was unlawful. He did not say it was lawful. He said it was untimely because I didn't say something before time, but he knew what he was doing. Because Lubbock ISD enforced this contract as a means of termination, it is unlawful. The Sabin-Pilot exception says employers cannot fire employees for unlawful reasons such as retaliation, discrimination, including when employees refuse to perform an illegal act. I refused that contract because I had filed grievances trying to get my pay for 1 year. Give me my pay for 1 year. Give me the opportunity to get my affairs in order. Lubbock ISD didn't care from the very beginning. June 30th, I filed for my unemployment benefits. July 31st, I was denied. Lubbock ISD stated I was fired because Lubbock ISD terminated my administrative contract. However, Max Flores emailed me on May 8th and threatened if I didn't sign the 167-day contract for 23-24, I would be terminated on May 24th. On May 9th, my administrative contract was terminated. However, my employment was not terminated on that day. Discrimination is the act of treating people differently or less favorable based on race, gender, color, and many other reasons. Lubbock ISD committed employment discrimination. Matt Chancy is a white male without his principal certification. Lubbock ISD did not suspend Matt Chancy on June 1st. Matt Chancy did not receive a letter from Dr. Rollo stating that the Board of Trustees would void his contract for failure to obtain principal certification. Matt Chancy was privileged by Dr. Kathy Rollo, Max Flores, David Johnson, Zack Brady, Misty Reber, Rick Rodriguez, and the Executive Principals and the entire Lubbock ISD community for continuing as an administrator knowing that I was suspended for not having my principal certification. Instead, Lubbock ISD silently gave him an educational advantage. Beth Bridges invited him to attend professional development the summer, fall, and spring. Matt Chancy conducted himself as an administrator at Priority Intervention Academy, and he did a fabulous job. I don't have a problem with Matt Chancy. I am not prejudiced or racist in any way. As an administrator, he evaluated teachers using the T-Test rubric, but I was denied. As an administrator, he was handed the Behaviorals with Review 360. Listed are examples of retaliation. Number 1, I was demoted. Number 2, I was terminated. Number 3, I was assigned a less desirable position. Number 4, I was harassed with emails over and over and over again from communications, from payroll, and from human resources. My pay was cut by $21,500 immediately. I requested accommodations, and I did not get them. Those are the reasons why I am complaining. These are the reasons why I have a complaint with Lubbock ISD. These are the reasons why I have a complaint with Lubbock ISD. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Mr. Elza, you now have a maximum of 30 minutes to respond to Mrs. King's complaint. Do you wish to reserve time for closing comments?
Yes, ma'am. I'll reserve five minutes.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Good afternoon. My name is Slater Elza. I'm an attorney, practice primarily out of Amarillo and Lubbock. And for about the last 20 years of my career, I've spent a large...
Speak up, we can't hear you.
Hello?
We can't hear you.
For about the last 20 years of my career, I have had the privilege of representing administrations around the state of Texas, all sides, in all directions. And it's something that I take great pride in. I come from a family of educators, and I think that helps me to see both sides of issues. I can tell you on behalf of myself and on behalf of your administration, nobody likes when we have a teacher, or a student, or any employee that is upset. And her level of upset is real. I mean, you can tell that by watching her. And I don't begrudge her for being here, and nobody should begrudge her for being here. She has a right, under these policies, to be here and to express her version, and we should, and we do, respect that very much. I have a PowerPoint presentation I'm going to work through, but I want to start with this because I think this is so important. You heard a lot of comments about how asking her to resign was an issue. I will tell you this, many of y'all know this because you've been around education for years and years. The offer to let somebody resign is a sign of respect because otherwise, you void that contract under the law. Otherwise, you terminate that person. I mean, depending on the circumstances, offering them to respect, or offering them the opportunity to resign is an offer of respect that is done throughout this state on a daily basis. I thought that was important for everyone to understand. I'll work through here. We've heard the summary of grievances from Madam President Bridges, as well as from Ms. King. But these are some of the accusations: a breach of contract, discrimination, the illegal 167-day contract, the pay for December 22nd, which is now moot, rather than continue to fight over a partial day in payment, that was paid. She's accused different employees of educator code of ethics violations, criminal abuse of authority. That's a very serious allegation that she's made against your employees and representatives. Deceptive trade practices, arguing that services and goods that she purchased from the school district were deceptive. Y'all don't sell services. Y'all don't sell goods. But that's a part of these grievances. It's a part of the federal lawsuit against y'all. She continues to talk about MC, I won't use names because they're not part of this, that there were other uncertified assistant principals allowed to keep their jobs. It is simply not true. You have over 1,000 pages of documents that tell you and show you, MC was converted to a new position with his new teacher pay on the same day that Ms. King was. Improper changes in position and pay, we will talk about that a lot when you see the agreement that Ms. King signed. She makes an accusation throughout these grievances and in the federal lawsuit that Zach Brady, she did not know he was an attorney. Doesn't matter, but she claims that. But she also sued him and files a grievance alleging legal malpractice, which, under the law, requires that he was her attorney for her to make that claim. So she argues that she did not know he was an attorney, but that he was also her attorney. He was not her attorney, and he was there as a representative of this board as your president, that the district did not follow the nonrenewal process. We will talk about that extensively, and that she was distressed when she made the agreement with L I S D. And while it may have been a distressful time, that is not a legal basis for doing away with your agreement. So here, we jump into this. This is her resignation that she signed. She resigned her position effective today, June 15th. That was the night that she, or the day that she was facing her contract being voided. That contract was voided, she was left with nothing, no job of any type. It was over. So if you have a group of people who are discriminators and haters and out to get her, why wouldn't they have just taken the vote? The contract was voided, and it would have been over, but they didn't do that. Dr. Rollo and Zach Brady entered into an agreement, and it is very hard to see. It's in your packets on page 1-63, but I will hit the high points on these coming ones. So again, we're going to jump through because time is moving quick, but that May 15th contract that she signed, the administrator term contract, says, like every term administrator's contract in the state of Texas, this contract is, quote, "conditioned on Ms. King satisfactorily providing the certification and other records and information required by law." So, yes, there was a contract, but that contract was dependent on her being able to show that she met the conditions of the law, which she does not dispute. She cannot meet because she is still not certified as a principal in Texas. So after she got that job, the first thing that happens post-learning that she is not certified and therefore not qualified for the job, Mr. Flores, who you heard her say ugly things about in her presentation, began immediately working with her. How do we get this certification? Can we do this through Florida? Can we do this through Texas? Working to find a way to do it. On June 1st, because that June 15th meeting was coming up, Dr. Rollo did provide her notice that the board would consider voiding her contract on June 15th. On June 6th, the parents got an email that she was not going to be principal. That was hard. That was hard on your administration. That was hard on teachers, and that was hard on Ms. King. I'm not going to speak for her, she's right there, but I know how hard it was. And I've seen her write about that. On June 14th, Mr. Flores shared with her the documents that would be discussed at that meeting. And at that meeting, during a break, she offered a resignation, which I showed you before, and then she signed the new agreement. So let's talk about the important parts of that agreement, which are on page 1-63 in your packets. Dr. Rollo agreed to extend the date for her to successfully complete her certification requirements, that is, to pass the test, which she had failed multiple times in the past. They got permission, she got permission, to take it again on the 26th. Interestingly, the same day that MC got the opportunity to take the test, treated exactly the same as one another. It also said that if she obtained that principal certification, that this district would find an administrative position for her. That wasn't disrespect, that was respect. We will find a place for you and then, at an administrative level. So, it went on. In the event that she could not complete her principal certification requirements, she would have the option, not the requirement, she would have the option to take a classroom teaching position at the salary commensurate of a teacher. This was the agreement that she made that was witnessed by her husband. She was permitted to continue to take the certification exam, even if she didn't pass, and to apply for positions in the future for which she might be qualified once she was certified. And right after that, she filed grievance one. We end up with a total of eight grievances. Not all of them were here on today. While she was on leave that summer, she was paid at the assistant's principal salary for approximately 26 days. This is very careful when we start talking about the difference between 167 days and 187 days. Because think about 167 days plus these 26, and that's one answer to the question. She was paid for more days than ended up being in the contract. September 5th, she voluntarily began working at Bean Elementary, and then four days later, went on unpaid FMLA leave, which extended to December 22nd. All of this, again, done in accordance with the agreement she signed with the district on June 15th. November 27th, the resolution of one of the EEOC complaints that she had filed against the district, and it gave her the right to sue, meaning they did not find one way or the other. That's kind of a typical legal step. They washed their hands of it and allow her to sue, which she did approximately 90 days later. January 25th, this board heard the grievances, first and second grievances, at Level 3. And we continue on. We get to April 3rd through 5th, that's the beginning of the grievances we're here on today. What were the results of that? Mr. Flores heard the Level 1, and he said everything from before March 12th, that's in accordance with your policy, was untimely. You have 15 days under y'all's policy to file a grievance. That is so that we can get things, look at it while memories are fresh. The relief requested was she requested to negotiate a settlement with L I S D. That's not how it works when you have a federal lawsuit, and it's not a proper resolution of a grievance. She again talked about MC, that she was treated differently than she was. We'll continue to talk about that as we move through here. She also talked about employee BR. BR was not treated any differently than she was, and her pay claim was denied because she was properly paid throughout this entire time in accordance with the agreement that she made with the district. Went on to Level 2, there were some new and different terms and requests that were accommodated for the most part and listened to, even though they had not been at Level 1. We turn to this idea of nonrenewal versus voidness. Under the law, her contract was void. That was what was coming to this group when she resigned her position. It was no longer an issue. I understand that at some point, she tried to undo the agreement that she had made, but she had made that agreement, and so we were not in a nonrenewal position. That agreement told us, get your certification, we'll extend you to let you get the certification. If you do, you can be an administrator. If you don't, you can be a teacher if you want. If you don't want, you walk away. Period. It's up to you. She asked for an administrative principal position, which, again, she was not qualified for. As we sit here today, she is still not qualified for. I suspect, based on the qualifications that you've heard about her, if the law were different, the choices may have been different. But the law doesn't give us choices in this circumstance. The law requires that to be a principal and to have the position that she wants, she has to be certified. We continue on. There was a finding that there was no retaliation, and as you work through this, you will see that the district did not retaliate against her, but instead gave her multiple options. They didn't just say, we're going to avoid it, and you're done. As I've told you, they gave her option after option that she chose to agree to. We get into May. She's right. She got a letter that said, "Nonrenewal season is upon us, and if you've been on this board for any period of time, you know that that's what we're doing in that part of the year." And here was the problem. She had never signed a contract. So the idea of contract renewal does not exist, not legally and not logically. And that is because if you do not have a contract, we cannot renew that contract. Even though she had not signed the contract through the year, we let her work in an at-will position. She had an appeal to the Commissioner of Education based on the board voiding the contract. Remember, that was done in May because she disagreed with how it was done in February, which was really in addition, or sensed and related to in June, when it was on the agenda, and due to the agreement she made, was no longer necessary. But the Commissioner of Education dismissed that appeal. Then we move to the whistleblower complaint. This is grievance 6, I believe, that she had filed. This again focused on the MC claim that he was treated differently, and she wanted answers why she could not continue as an assistant principal. He did not continue as an assistant principal. He had the same pay, he had teacher pay that started on September 1st. No matter how many times somebody says something different, it does not change the facts. Does not change because something didn't get updated on a website. Doesn't change because of something a secretary may or may not have said, which certainly has not been disclosed in the federal lawsuit. He was treated exactly the same. So, we get to May 15th, where have grievance hearings. RB came up. RB's issue is a little different because he had not, he'd had a principal certification forever, hadn't served in a position since 2011, in a principal-based position, because of certain things that had happened in his life. But the certification did have, had expired, and he was allowed to renew it. You know what happened when the school district went in, and they were working with Ms. King to find a position for her? You know what they found? Certification. Teaching certifications had expired. You know what they let her do? Renewal, just like they did RB. So these examples that you hear about, about how people were treated differently and better, these people were treated exactly like her, and I think that's important because I think this board needs to know that your administration goes out of its way to be fair and equal in their treatment of everyone. Mr. Flores noted, again, we continue to have grievances that were untimely. And an important part of a whistleblower complaint in Texas is that the complaint had to be made to law enforcement who had the authority to act on it. One thing we have never heard is that any report has been made to law enforcement about any of the employment-related activities and decisions that relate to her not being certified to be a principal or an assistant principal. So again, this grievance was denied because it legally and factually did not fit. Moving on to what I call the "did not resign" grievance. She says she did not resign her administrator's contract, just her job as principal at Talkington. And maybe that is, and maybe it's not splitting hairs, but what it ignores is the agreement that she signed on June 15th. She said, "If you will leave me unpaid leave, let me take the test again. We'll see what happens. If it works out, I'll get this job. If it doesn't work out, I can take this other job if I want." So this idea that she didn't resign is a red herring. It's misleading in this sense. She signed off on a course of action that this administration and this district followed to a T. When you hear about this lack of respect, think about that. They let her make a deal, they gave her options they didn't have to give her, and they followed them from beginning to end. They never deviated from the plan that she signed, that she requested, that they followed. She had complaints about her employment ending. We've talked about that. She was not terminated, her employment just ended. When you don't have a contract and you're at will because you didn't want to sign a contract, what does that mean? On the last day, you're finished. They didn't fire her for doing something or for not doing something. Her work year simply ended. So, in this, she was raising issues related to her compensation, which had been raised with her first attorney. And so, in the sense that she's asking, and I'm not sure what relief she's requesting from this board today, because she has another job, I haven't heard her ask for her job back. So to the extent she's asking this board to rule on a grievance related to her compensation, that was handled in a previous grievance and is not proper for this board here today. She raised discrimination, retaliation, and harassment, which were already pending. It's neither here nor there, but they're already pending, and they're before you today. And that's why we've talked about the very fact that there has not been discrimination, retaliation, or harassment. She's been treated like the other people in her same position. Her complaints about the termination of her administrator's contract in this grievance are very simple. She simply is not certified and qualified under state law, and that is why she was given the opportunity to have a teaching position and stay with the district for this past school year. Grievance 8, this is the illegal 167-day contract that you hear her talk about. Here's the deal. Why was it 167 days? That's because by the time she took the test, got the test back, and started her new position in a teaching capacity... uh, in a teaching capacity, there were 167 days left in the year. She'd been paid for 20-plus days as administrator that year, that school year. And so, as I said at the beginning, she actually got paid for more days than she's complaining about here. She said that, um, she's now been fired or terminated for refusing to sign this illegal contract. It's not an illegal contract. If you had teachers that quit in the middle of second semester and you had to go get other teachers and you wanted to hire them to teach the rest of the year, you're not required to pay them for the full year. And you're not required to pay them twice for the same time, like she's asking y'all to do here today. She has received more money than she was entitled to for that school year. That was a choice that was made, um, for which she now complains, um, but she has been paid more than in full. Here's the most important part maybe of this entire case, the eight grievances, the two E E O C complaints, the two state appeals, the federal lawsuit. I'm telling you, I think maybe the most important thing is if you look at page four dash O two, she states, and I put it in brackets, uh, but she says, "I chose to continue my employment in a teaching position." Think about the complaints you heard here today. They don't mess with what she says here. "I chose to do this," of her own free will, "and it was honored and respected by this administration." She asked to work an additional 20 days to earn the pay for those 20 days. But as I've told you again and again, she'd already been paid more than those 20 days at a higher rate. I got a little ahead of myself. Um, again, those are, uh, issues that relate back to September 2023, so they were untimely. However, they were still responded to. As we sit here today, they're still untimely. So let me conclude this part of my present, presentation. Ms. King has been afforded a tremendous amount of due process. I can't change the law. The administration can't change the law. We can't give away money because, um, she's upset or because somebody made a mistake and gave her a contract. Those are government taxpayer funds and we are restricted in what we can do. But she has had eight grievances, two E E O C complaints, two administrative appeals, a $7 million, uh, federal lawsuit that she has pending in the federal court here. The focus of all of these is that she should be allowed to either have a job or be paid for a job that the law simply does not allow. Her complaint should be with the state and the way the state has drafted their laws, not with this district. I started here because I heard how important it was to her in her presentation. On June 15th, this district and this administration respected her enough to let her resign without being terminated over the void contract. Again, as you deliberate this, think to yourself, if all of these evil people were simply out to get her, why would they go through all of these unnecessary steps when the law is very clear? If she's not certified, she's not qualified and it's void, then we're done. It's over. 16 months ago, 18 months ago, nobody would be here. So again, think what motivation somebody would have to go through all of these steps, um, just to be mean or to be evil. This was the easy way out if they didn't want her. They wanted her. That's why they gave her chance after chance after chance. Why in May of last school year, they're saying, is there a way that we can look to do this? Do, you know, we don't want you just to terminate. Do you want to resign? Do you want to look at new and other or different positions? She chose, um, her own path. She got to choose her destiny and we honored that. So again, the one thing I want to leave here with is everybody understanding there was never a lack of respect. She is an accomplished lady. Uh, she has many great gifts. I suspect those gifts are being used in her current employment, but they are not gifts that match up with what she wanted here from this district, not things that we could do. Nobody likes to see a person as hurt and upset as Ms. King is. I can promise you that. As I said at the beginning, not me, not your administration. And, and I won't speak for y'all, but y'all don't want to see somebody that's, that's upset. But again, we cannot change the law. And because we cannot have changed the, because we cannot change the law, um, there is nothing that this board can do, in our opinion, other than uphold the decisions in these numerous grievances that we're here about today. On behalf of the administration, I thank you for the time to be here, uh, and address these issues. And again, we just thank everybody for their patience and allowing us to get to this point.
Thank you, Mr. Elza. Mrs. King, um, you have five minutes remaining. Do you wish to use five minutes? Please proceed.
First of all, I did not make a deal in order to be a teacher. I want to make that clear. I was an administrator for five years because an administrator told me that I could be an assistant principal or a principal without my principal certification, as long as I had my master's in ed leadership. From there, that's how I became an assistant principal and administrator all those years. Under Saban pilot law, an employer cannot force an employee to participate in an illegal activity or retaliate against them for refusal. Termination of employee is not wrongful, it is illegal. The 167-day, no matter how they slice it, is still an illegal contract. DEA legal compensation and benefits, the 167-day contract is illegal without a furlough due process. There was no process that happened. It's an illegal piece of paper. Title seven of the Civil Acts Act of 1964 prohibits employment discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, national origin. It applies to employers, employment agencies, labor organizations and training program. It protects employees and job applicants for employment discrimination. It prohibits an employer from retaliating against employees or applicants when they assert their rights under the law. Lubbock ISD wants to conceal their discriminatory actions from you, but you have been enlightened today with facts that systematic bigotry are evident and unmistakable within Lubbock ISD senior leadership. Let, remind, let me remind you, I was coerced to apply for the Talkington position. I didn't say I wanted to apply for it. They told me to apply for it. She told me to apply for it. I followed and directed. I was badgered to abandon the position that H R placed in my hands or to be fired immediately. I was the only uncertified administrator exiled from Lubbock ISD for three months. Mr. Chansey was also given an administrative educational advantage all year. We did not receive the same treatment, the same equivalent treatment. You have to see that. He continued working at Lubbock ISD. I was forbidden. I didn't have email, I didn't have anything. They told me return everything. He stayed at work and worked all those days. He may have taken the test, he may have failed the test, but he wasn't made to stay at home. He was not suspended. That's the treatment that I received. I was retaliated through the grievance process. Mr. Flores and Mr. Rodriguez should have never been my grievance administrators due to a conflict of interest. That's another form of retaliation and harassment. I was harassed and threatened with termination unless I signed this contract. I was demoted, I was relocated, I was reassigned, my pay was cut over $21,000 within five days without formal or specific due process. You all already know this, except a couple of you. I was retaliated against for filing an employment discrimination suit against Lubbock ISD. The next bo, um, the next day, the Board of Trustees attempted to void my administrative term contract. I was retaliated against for filing open records requests. Lubbock ISD has not complied with Texas Attorney General. I was retaliated against for filing a petition for review. I was retaliated against for filing a whistleblower complaint. Blake Reber was a, uh, paraprofessional. His, um, certification had lapsed for years. They could not see him, but they could see me. There's a problem with that. Harassment, May 8th, May, uh, Mr. Flores emailed an unsigned, he said I had an unsigned contract. If I had an unsigned contract, why did they terminate the contract the next day? That means the contract was not only alive, it was valid. He changed me from being a contracted to being at-will based on something that he knew was not true. Harassment, May 9th, Dr. Kathy Rolo, we know the procedures. She wasn't supposed to send an email. It was supposed to be hand-delivered, but she didn't. She emailed. That's another form of harassment. And if you read her letter, it is just targeted with deplorable, mean, hateful words.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Mr. Elza, would you, do you want to use your five minutes?
I was gonna see if I could get the PowerPoint. Hey, let's start with the very first thing that she said, and I think I have this quote. "I did not make a deal." It's the first thing she said in that rebuttal. And I invite y'all to go back, page one dash 63. That is the deal that she made. That, and we know that deal was made and we know that deal was valid because we followed it all the way through. She followed it all the way through. Remember the red letters on that slide that said, "I chose," remember? Cause that was her discretion. "I chose to take the teaching position." Why was that available? It was available because it was right in line with the agreement that she made. So she did make a deal. She said that we've been hiding and that now that everything else was in the open. Everything we have said, we have said in federal court, it's open for anybody that wants to look at it. There's a reason through this 30 pages of slides that I prepared, that I gave you page numbers to the record, because we're not hiding. We're putting a light on what happened. It's not interpretations of what happened. It's not us saying what happened. It's not us saying, uh, M C had a different deal 100 times when everybody knows he did not have a different deal. I gave you the page numbers because we're not hiding. She complains again about Flores and Rodriguez. I will tell you, Flores was her fan. I told you, I gave you this, he was out there. Let's look and see what we can do. Let's see if we can do this through Florida. Let's see if we can do this through Texas. Let's find a way to get you certified if we can. Why would somebody be going to that extra effort if they were just out to get someone and to hurt someone? She talked again about the open records, which is really not an issue here today, but because it's been brought up twice, I want you to know something. She did go to the Attorney General. There are specific steps that she is required to take. There's a step that's out there on the table that she chose not to take. So it's not really fair to your administration for her to say, yes, all I've got to do is this step to finish this deal. I'm not gonna do it, but I'm gonna complain that I didn't get what I should have if I would have done what I was supposed to. All she's got to do is follow the rules and she will get whatever she's entitled to under the law. It is laid out. She knows what she needs to do to get the information that she's requested that's not otherwise protected. She made the choice not to do it. I don't mean to be crass and I don't want to end on a crass point, but we've heard that statement in the past that says, uh, that talks about the kid that, uh, killed his parents and then cried because they're an orphan. That's what this is. She has the opportunity and the option to get the information that she has requested. It is not.
Death.
And, and I apologize if it is.
Yes, yes, it is. It is.
I take that back.
Shows your character.
None of that changes anything here today. I gave you the page numbers. Your administration has acted honorably at all times. And we ask that you uphold these, um, decisions that were made at the lower level, um, and that you do what the law requires us to do. Unfortunately, she is not qualified and we cannot change that. Thank you. And again, I apologize for any, uh, offense.
Thank you, Mr. Elza. Okay, trustees, I'm limiting questions to one per board member. The board may ask clarifying factual question within the scope of the grievance. Any response by the presenter should be brief. This is not a method to extend the time allotment of either presenter, either side. So board members, I will open it for a question per member if you desire.
The difficulty, the difficulty that I have with this is that when you were hired, even possibly before you were hired, and, uh, as it is with the hiring for a principal, there is certification. I'm wondering if you was aware that you needed to have that certification? You know, you have taken the classes and all of that. That's my questioning. And I do know that has been done with schools and they let you know that that's insufficient, that you have taken the classes or taken the courses. However, certification is what was needed and they give you that time to do that. And I know you did take the test and you failed the test. And that seemed to be what all this is revolving around. You're not having the certification. Usually I know with the hiring, you have that information. I know as a teacher myself, I had that certification. And there were some teachers who didn't, however, they went to get the certification. That's where my mind is right now.
Trustee Lawson, is there a question that you would like her to answer?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. King, you have.
Yes, so my response, thank you very much, uh, Ms. Lawson. My response to what you just said is yes, ma'am, there are certifications. However, I go back and say, in 2018, when I was with my principal at Majin and she asked me to be her assistant principal, I told her I did not have my principal certification. I graduated with my master's back in 2013. When I graduated from my, um, with my master's, I attempted to take the test several times. I wasn't successful. I went to Florida, I tried to take the test again. I wasn't successful there. When I came back to Texas, I became an instructional coach. Two years later, my principal asked me to be her assistant principal. I told her I did not have my principal certification. She told me, you don't need your principal certification. All you need is your master's in ed leadership. There are plenty of principals and assistant principals without their principal certifications and they are still principals and assistant principals. She said, "Shonda, I want you to be my assistant principal." I said, "Okay." I went online, I filled out the application. A few days later, a few weeks later, got a call from Rick Rodriguez. He said, "Shonda, you are now the assistant principal of Majin Elementary." And he said, "The next thing that I'm gonna do is I'm gonna set you up with T test and A E L so that you can be certified as a T test administrator."
Mrs. King, would you please answer the question? We only have a minute.
I said, "Yes, sir." And I completed all of that. I was an assistant principal for five years. Now, back to your question. The question is, on June fir, June 15th, when I met with Dr. Rolo and Zach Brady, they put a paper in front of me and they said, "Shonda." Um, and Matt had given me, I want to say maybe three or four days earlier. He said, "You either need to take the, uh, Florida or you need to take the Texas, but you gotta get it done." I said, "Okay." June 1st, he told me my time was up. June 15th, they told me you need to take this test and you need to pass it or you're going to be fired. We're gonna do this right here. Here's the form. You have to fill it out. You have to do it today.
Mrs. King, we have been over this.
Let me finish.
You have 30 seconds.
Let me finish.
30 seconds, please.
You didn't say that when he was being disrespectful.
It was a question from the dius.
Let me finish. He said to me.
We will not have that kind of conduct.
But you, you allowed his conduct? You allowed his conduct when he talked about murder? When he talked about killing a family? And you did not refuse that?
We are, we are simply asking.
Oh. Oh, I, I understand. I'm not privileged. I get it. I get it.
Answer the question, did you know you had to be certified as a principal? That's what...
And my answer is no, because my principal told me I did not need it.
We heard your answer. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Any other questions, members? Trustees?
So, I've got a question. Sorry, I'm late to this. I'm six months in, so I'm trying to absorb a lot of the information. So I'm just gonna clarify a couple of things, and I'm gonna ask my question. So, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this. So, my understanding is that there's three levels of pay here that essentially we're talking about in this particular case. There's teacher pay. There's the AP pay that had been in place for some period of time, and I think this question's probably gonna be for administration or administration's counsel. And then there's the principal pay that would have gone into effect. My understanding is, and again, correct me if I'm wrong on this, the principal pay didn't, in fact, ever take effect. So it was AP pay that was scaled back to teacher pay. The, and then going through the timeline, I understand, or correct me if I'm wrong, that the AP pay stayed in place until the end of August versus September, the 8:30 to 9:01, which would have included that July 26th timeline to have been able to take the principal test and, in fact, become certified. So, I guess, looking at the timeline, my question, maybe it's a two-part question. It was discovered, and from what it looks like in the information, there was a significant amount of time that had passed when Lubbock ISD or HR administration, whomever, didn't realize that Ms. King was not certified. So, given that oversight, you know, I'm looking at a May 15th date on essentially getting the job, and then two weeks go by, and somehow it's discovered that she's not certified. Why was there such swift action to, A, place her on administrative leave, and then, B, present that document that resigns that spot? I guess my question would be, why from the 1st of June till essentially the end of July, why did we not wait to see if that test was passed and if she could still, I guess, be principal at Talkington, would be my question. I understand that during that timeframe, that job was no longer on the table, but an administrative job would have been on the table. So, I guess, two questions. Why, why wasn't that still on the table for 60 days? Because it was end of the school year, middle of the summer. And then, second question, if it is correct that MC, however you want to refer to him, was not placed on the same kind of administrative leave? I read that letter, and, you know, it did talk about removing belongings, not communicating with people. Why was that different if, in fact, it was?
Thank you.
Mr. Elza, can you respond?
It can't be Dr. Rollo.
Okay. I just, we're looking. And so, we'll start with the first one. You know, why was it rushed? There was a process. There was a meeting coming up, and it was determined that the contract was void. I think what I would say is, the fact that Dr. Rollo and Mr. Brady were out there talking with her that night was to come to an agreement that would afford her that time. It's where timelines, you know, run into creativity and flexibility. That agreement is what allowed her that time to try to get the certification. Does that answer the question?
So, I guess specifically, my question is, you know, maybe I'll rephrase it. Is there a way, or would it have been an option for the school district to have held off on whether she had the Talkington job until, until we knew whether she had passed the principal certification test in late July?
And so, administration made the decision. All jobs are important, but because of that job, that needed to be handled at that point so that they could get a principal in place instead of waiting until September to find out who was gonna be the principal.
Okay.
That just had to be done from an organizational standpoint.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now that the board has heard the grievance, the board has the following options. It may grant the grievance and provide appropriate relief. Two, it may deny the grievance and uphold the decision of the administration. Three, it may grant the grievance in part and deny the grievance in part, modifying the decision of the administration. Or, four, it may make no decision. The board will now deliberate in open session. I just wanted to clarify also, trustee Wadig, to your question, I think there was some timeline just, and you may have stated this, Mr. Elza, that just to get administratively organized for Talkington for that following year, there were some quick timelines that we had to, that we had to move forward with.
Yeah, when did school start? August something?
Probably 15th, mid-August.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll open the floor for discussion, trustees. Liberation.
I guess I'm a little unclear on what exactly is being asked for. Y'all could enlighten me.
Do we have a summary of, that we can refer back to of the grievance? You have off the top of your head of just the different...
The, we have five grievances that have been requested.
Consolidated.
Mainly, we have, I think one is the, whether the contract was 160-day contract, 167-day contract, which in the contract, there is no number. It is in the actual contract. We have discrimination. She would like her job back, I believe.
No, I do not want my job back. I do, I have a job. I do have a job.
And so, they're listed on each of the particular grievances that are, at the very first of each one, we have, she would like to pay.
I think it's the 20-days pay.
It would be reimbursed to her.
Can I clarify that, Ms. Man?
Would that be, would that be for AP pay or principal pay?
AP pay.
Okay.
But that was decided in, that was decided in the January 25th grievance, I must have known.
Okay.
For AP pay.
Okay.
So that is not, that is not up for consideration.
Okay.
Even though it was asked. So you already decided that.
Okay. AP from one school to another? Or was she already at Talkington?
Moving.
Okay, that's, okay.
Uh-uh.
I guess the only comments that I would make is that, just going through my notes, I don't see evidence of intentional sabotage, which was... The 167 versus 180 days would make sense that it's based on 20 days of administrative pay already happening. And I see evidence of requested accommodations that were suggested that that didn't happen. I don't see, I mean, that's just my thoughts. No.
Again, this is, for those of us, this was a ton of data to go through and understand, and especially with the combination of different grievances, it was difficult. But I think we've gotten the good job summary, summary and the gist of the issue. I think my question, I did not ask, because Mary Ann hit it. Mary Ann, when you ask if certification, if Ms. King understood that she had not passed the test and did not hold that certification, and I think that question was answered. So thank you for asking that question.
So, another clarification question. This was kind of my second part of the question. So, the other administrative role or person that is the topic of discussion in some of this, they were or were not placed on administrative leave during this process or around the same time when all this was discovered? Were not? And was that a function of not... I guess I'm trying to understand that part of it. Was that a function of them being at the same campus or not being in a principal role? Or, you know, there were differences here. I guess I'm just trying to understand what those were, that they were not moving campuses and weren't going to be moving into a principal role or...
I don't know, and I don't know that it's, I mean, I know that it is a part of this discussion here, but I don't know that that is relevant to any decision today.
That's discrimination.
In, you know, particular to him and about him. How it pertains to this situation is for you to discuss and decide, but I don't know the answer to that question. Well, we're deliberating, so...
John, I'll speak to the fact, and, excuse me, audience, this is extremely weird to be deliberating out in the open, and so it's, I think you see consternation amongst everybody, because I understand there's different perspectives to the situation that we're all in. But I think to that point, we were assured, I can just speak from my perspective as a board, when the error was found, the charge was review every single position, because, you know, obviously, an error was made with respect to somebody having a position that was not qualified to have that position per statute. And so, at that time, anyone who wasn't was reviewed, and I think given the same grace to try to obtain that certification, and my understanding is, those people were not, no one obtained the certification they were required to, to stay in those positions, at least from what I understand. And so, you know, although I can't direct anybody, you know, I hate the position that this entire thing is in. I hate that someone was given an opportunity that I think we all felt very, very good about when that was made, and the reality is, no one on this board knew or didn't know that certifications were had or not had. And so, in hindsight, obviously, that would have been good to have. The reality is, time was provided to meet that certification requirement, which would have alleviated all this.
One month.
I don't see, personally, there were some direct answers with respect to some of the claims of discrimination and biased, and I believe the evidence shows that there were a number of remedies that Ms. King had that didn't work out for whatever reason. And so, I'm having a hard time with, with reviewing this with respect to changing anything that's been done to this point, whether I love the outcome or not, somewhat irrelevant to the decision.
Is there a motion? One way or the other?
Based on what I said, I move that we deny the grievance and uphold the administration's determination at the level two regarding the grievances.
Trustee Curry, have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You, trustee Routleff. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign?
Aye.
Thank you. So that's five in the aye, one opposed. Right? Motion carries, five to one. Thank you. This hearing is now concluded. The meeting is adjourned at 2:45 PM.